The Lemonster City Council Meeting is funded in part by De Careless Insurance Agency at www.decarelessinsuranceagency.com and by Avidia Bank at www.avidia.com.
Chairwoman of the Ways and Means Committee, the other members of my committee to my left is Councilor Frank Ardinger and to my right is Councilor David Cormier. And tonight, we are here on C-73. This is Dean J. Mazzarella, Mayor. Request the appointments of the following to the Cultural Commission term to expire April 15th of 2028. Our first candidate, Afia Obeng, is unable to make it this week to this meeting, so we're going to continue that to another date and we'll post that as well. But we do have with us is Denise Sutton from Lemonster, who is here, so I'd like to welcome you, Ms. Sutton.
Thank you.
And I want to open this up by basically giving you the opportunity to introduce yourself to the members of the council and to everyone who's here this evening, so take it away.
Okay. My name is Denise Sutton. I've been resident of Lemonster for many years. My kids went to school here. I coached them in soccer for many years and I volunteer a couple of different, for a different, a couple for, ugh, for a different couple of agencies and I just want to give back to the community by joining the Cultural Commission to be able to give back to the city of Lemonster. I was away from the city for about 15 years in Arizona. I came back here and I just want to get more involved.
We missed you.
Well, thank you. I don't miss the cold and I don't miss the snow, but I miss being back here with family and friends.
So what do you know about the Cultural Commission and what attracted you to that board?
Well, they gave us a grant, I worked, I volunteered for the summer concerts and I also volunteered for the Lemonster radio station and they gave us grants for both of them and so I got interested in how it operated and how they go about giving out the grants and so I went to a couple of their meetings and it was very interesting to see they don't just hand out the money to whoever puts in the application, they, you know, they vote on it and so I found it very interesting and I just feel like I wanted to be part of that. And I feel like we both, we can help each other out with the community.
Great, thank you. That's all the questions that I have for you. I'm gonna turn this over to the clerk of our committee, Councilor Ardinger. Do you have any questions?
Just a couple of comments. First of all, I see that you've done your homework by going to the meetings and getting involved earlier this, and that's a good thing. As I look at your resume, I look at your computer experience, and that is outstanding.
Thank you.
And there's nothing negative I could see on your resume or you sitting there, so I'm looking forward to voting for you.
Thank you very much.
Thank you. Councilor David Cormier?
I don't have any specific questions other than I wish you, you know, well in the position and I'm sure you'll have a lot of fun and bring a lot of new ideas to the commission, so congratulations. Thank you.
Thank you.
I will open it up to Councilor Susan Shalafou Zephyr.
Thank you very much. What a nice surprise. It's so nice to see you, Denise.
Nice to see you.
Yeah, we go way back to the Lemonster youth soccer coaching days when our kids were little.
Yeah, yeah.
But, well, this is great. It's really nice to see you. I know that you have a lot of volunteer experience, you know, in addition to your work and professional experience, so I think that's a great fit for you and thank you so much for volunteering.
Thank you.
Any other councilors? Okay, seeing none, Ms. Sutton, thank you very much. Thank you for coming in. Thank you for agreeing to volunteer. The volunteers keep the wheels running in this town, so we'd be happy to have you aboard. Now, the vote on this comes up a little bit later in the meeting. You're welcome to stay and wait for the vote, or you can leave and we can, we can let you know. I will ask the President if later on we can bump up the vote on this, so we can get through that a little bit earlier. But thank you very much and thank you for being willing to volunteer.
Thank you for listening to me.
Thank you.
Thank you.
All right, thank you, Madam Chairwoman. It's 6:25, right on schedule. Councilor Robbins, are you ready with the public service hearing?
I am. This is a public hearing on 42-25. Massachusetts Electric Company doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Inc. requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Torrey Circle, National Grid to install one jointly owned pole on Torrey Circle beginning at a point approximately 367 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Willard Street and Torrey Circle. National Grid to install one new 35-foot Class III pole and anchor numbered P2-50 on Torrey Circle to reposition the overhead lines that have been knocked down by dump trucks per the customer's request, Lemonster, Mass. Location approximately as shown on plan attached. Whereof it prays that after due notice and hearing as provided by law, it be granted a location for and permission to erect and maintain poles and wires, together with such sustaining and protecting fixtures as it may find necessary. Said poles to be erected substantially in accordance with the plan filed here within marked Torrey Circle, Lemonster, Massachusetts. This is actually a continued public hearing that was opened at the last council meeting. Is the representative from National Grid here? Come on up to the table if you wouldn't mind and just reintroduce yourself for everyone.
Hello, my name is Kazi. I'm with National Grid.
Thanks for coming back. So if everyone remembers, at the last meeting, there was just some concern from residents in the area that they hadn't gotten any information about, about the changes and I just, I guess my question is, were you able to chat with the resident and get that addressed?
Yeah, I was able to chat with the resident. He was worried about a pole down the street, so it was a different pole and, you know, I addressed it and, you know, let him know the proper ways to reach out.
Perfect. I'll go to other members of the committee. Councilor Frida, any questions?
No, I'm good with that, thank you.
Councilor Nowsworthy?
No questions.
Great. Any other councilors have any questions? Seeing none, I'll go to the members of the public. Is there anybody that would like to speak in favor of or against this petition? For a second time, would anybody like to speak in favor of or against this petition? For a third and final time, would anybody like to speak in favor of or against this petition? Seeing none, Mr. President, I'll close the public hearing.
Thank you very much, Mr. Chairman.
All righty, thank you.
And it'll be just a couple of minutes before we can start 41-25.
Susan Shalafou Zephyr, I'm the chairperson of the Legal Affairs Committee. Councilor to my right, Robert Tossi, the Ward One Councilor, is also on the committee. And Pauline Cormier, the Ward Two Councilor, is the third member of Legal Affairs. So this public hearing is on petition 41-25. Lisa Nugent of 45 Beth Avenue, Lemonster, requests that the City Council prohibit all horse and dog racing and any associated betting or wagering anywhere within Lemonster, Massachusetts, by the following. Amend Article 1, Section 22-4, definitions by adding the following definition. Race track: any tract of land where horses or dogs are raced and where any form of betting or wagering on the speed or ability of horses or dogs are permitted or conducted. Amend Article 3, Section 22-17, underlying district's table of uses under business. Uses to add "racetrack" as a listed use and to add the letter "N" for not allowed in every column for each and every district. Amend Article 3, Section 22-18, overlay district's table of uses under business uses to add "racetrack" as a listed use and to add the letter "U" for underlying district in each and every column for each and every overlay district. The purpose of this zoning amendment is to prohibit commercial horse or dog racing anywhere within the city of Lemonster. So this petition has been referred to the Legal Affairs Committee. Tonight is our public hearing and we have referred this to a number of different departments and city heads and we are waiting for the planning board recommendation. We'll go to the planning board. Anything that has to do with zoning automatically goes to the planning board. And the planning board has a public hearing on this on May 19th, which they're going to open and close and they're going to then put this on their June 16th agenda. There are two petitions that are related, very, you know, they're very dissimilar, but they're related. This one and then the, I think it's 48 or 47-25, 47-25, Liz? Thank you. And that's the fairgrounds. So I think what the planning board is going to do is have a public hearing for both of these petitions so that, you know, it streamlines the process so that people who are, you know, involved and have opinions about both can attend one public hearing, you know, have one big conversation and then we'll get referrals back to the City Council on both of those. So tonight, though, this, this public hearing is open for 41-25 and if there is anybody on the council who has any questions or would like to speak about this petition, I'll go to my committee first. Councilor Tossi?
No, not at this time.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
No questions, no, thank you.
No questions, okay. Well, at this point, if there's anybody in the audience and the public who would like to speak in favor of this petition?
Madam Chair, I just have one thing.
Oh, sorry.
It's not a question, but on the official petition that was submitted, in the first line, it says, and this is how you read it, it says prohibit all horse and dog racing and any associated betting. And on the agenda, it says associate betting and I think that just is a typo that needs to be corrected because I think it makes it confusing.
Absolutely. So the city clerk will take care of that typo.
Thank you.
Yep, perfect. Okay, so if there's anybody in the audience tonight who would like to speak in favor or in opposition to 41-25, you could come to the microphone here and would you please give your name and address for the public record?
Okay. Lisa Nugent, 45 Beth Ave. Good evening, city councilors. You guys have seen quite a bit of us lately. As petition 41-25 is supported by many here tonight, I'd like to invite those in favor of it to please stand while I read this statement. We hope that the members of the council have found value in information provided in the packets at the initial reading and in the numerous emails many of us have sent to you. We hope that the information helps to overcome the glaring omission of thoroughbred horse racing from the fairgrounds' community outreach propaganda being circulated online through the mail, newspapers, et cetera. As you can see, there is an abundant verifiable data, an abundant amount of verifiable data that substantiates the ample travesties and downsides of the thoroughbred horse racing industry and its associated gambling. Our city is fortunate to be in a position not to have to take such risks and to stoop to such ethical lows to remain viable. We can do so without allowing the likes of thoroughbred racing and associated betting to access to our community. We realize that should 41-25 pass and 47-25 pass as well, that 47-25 would supersede 41-25. But if Lemonster had already had an ordinance in place like that of 41-25, Bay State Racing might not have even considered Lemonster to begin with. Passing 41-25 now could help to insulate us from similar proposals in the future, given what goes into combating such a proposal. This is something we would like very much to avoid. Lastly, the copious issues and atrocities dot com of the thoroughbred horse racing industry transcend Lemonster's boundaries. We are hoping that, like the communities before us, you'll recognize how deplorable it truly all is. Your votes on May 23rd can ensure that thoroughbred horse racing doesn't gain footing in Lemonster, making it more feasible to eradicate at the state level in the future. We respectfully ask that you please vote in favor of 41-25. Thank you again for your time and consideration.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak either in favor of or against petition 41-25?
Good evening. Natalie Higgins, 333 Elm Street. I just want to piggyback on what Lisa had brought up and say how important this is for Lemonster to take a stand and just ban animal racing and wagering within our municipality. I'm really disappointed that this petition has been delayed in the process to be taken up with the other petition because this could kind of settle the matter once and for all and in the future. I just want to bring some efforts from across the state where communities have stepped up to protect animal welfare and either led to statewide laws or continuing to lead the advocacy effort. 16 communities are stepping up against puppy mills, making sure that pet shops cannot source within their community animals from a puppy mill. 26 states are banning rodenticides. Eight states are banning the sale of new furs, eight communities are banning this sale of new furs. 15 communities are banning the exotic animals and traveling shows, which led to a statewide ban passed last year. We've continued to see communities step up time and time again to say this doesn't belong in our town or our city and I think Lemonster has a great opportunity to be able to do that and also lead the way, making sure that horse racing ends like dog racing has ended in Massachusetts. So, thank you.
Thank you.
Lynda Jean Hall, 435 North Street. I'm not an eloquent speaker, but I will say this, I support this initiative. I don't think we should have racing in Lemonster. I, I am concerned, again, with the treatment of racing animals, which I think is deplorable to begin with, but my other concerns are that, one of the reasons I moved to Lemonster about 20 or so years ago is it's a wonderful community, it's a beautiful community, it's a safe community. Bringing in horse racing inevitably brings in gambling. Gambling inevitably leads to more crime and will inevitably lead Lemonster to be an unsafe community to stay in. I really like Lemonster, I'd like to stay here, but that concerns me greatly, you know. Never mind the facts that having a fairgrounds here will, you know, I think tax public resources to a certain extent. There's going to be a great rise in the amount of trash that has to be disposed of, you know, how much gets paid for by them, how much gets paid for by us. There will be increased traffic control needed, there will be increased police presence needed. Who ends up paying for all of that? You know, inevitably, I suspect it will be the residents of Lemonster. So I have grave concerns about bringing in any kind of racing of any kind into Lemonster. Thank you.
Hi, Anthony DiMano, 22 Witchfield Pines Drive. I'm here to speak against the motion. I grew up in Lemonster, excuse me, I went away for school, I came back a few years ago. I unfortunately don't know many people who did the same. A lot of my colleagues moved away and stayed away. And I think part of the issue is that a lot of the activities and entertainment we grew up with are gone. So Whalen's gone, Rolon, Mason's, Lancaster Golf, and I struggle to see, you know, why should I continue to live here, raise a family as I prepare to get married, look for a house? I think that to accept this amendment or this motion might be putting things, you know, out of reach. I think of all the different attempts that we've had to sustainably develop that landfill site and as an architect working in Worcester, I know that there's high cost involved, there's a battery of, you know, meeting EPA regulations, meeting Conservation Commission regulations, doing sustainability and traffic studies. I would like to see that landfill developed into something profitable for the town, for the residents, so that, you know, we have these great festivals downtown, they tie up traffic, why not have other green space that we can develop and reuse for everyone? And I am just concerned that if we approve this amendment, we know, we already know that there's a developer who wants to develop the land, why should we be the ones paying to develop the land when we can just use it on the developer's dollar? So thank you for your time.
Is there anyone else in the public who would like to speak on petition 41-25?
Hi, I'm Thomas Farnsworth. I live at 48 Fox Meadow Road. I'm here tonight to present this record, for this record, this petition of 1,300 Lemonster residents who have given their names and addresses in support of the proposed fairground project. The zoning change being considered tonight is in direct opposition to the wishes of myself and these 1,300 other residences and we are not alone. This change wants to kill fairgrounds and end the tremendous opportunity that we will have for this development. It will end our chance to get our over $1 million in new revenue for our city. It will end the creation of over 300 new jobs for our area. It will end our chance to address and modernize the environmental controls of the closed mechanic street landfill. It will end our chances to address the traffic concerns along mechanic street and it will end our opportunity for Lemonster. Please oppose this proposed zoning change and I'd like to present these two. Thank you. Appreciate it.
Good evening. Hello, my name is John Hoshard and I live in Gardner. Before I get started, I'd just like to say I'm very impressed with how the residents of Lemonster have been conducting themselves. You folks have done your research, presented it professionally, articulately, and have been very civil to one another. I'm very impressed with the City Council and President Bredanza. Public speaking is very difficult, as you can see, I'm struggling with it, and it's scary for many of us. So I thank you for all creating a comfortable and encouraging atmosphere. So I said I'm from Gardner and I'm here tonight to support petition 41-25. When I first heard about this petition, my first reaction was, this is brilliant. My second thought was, I wish that us in Gardner and the other communities had thought of and implemented such a simple and yet effective strategy. First, please allow me to briefly explain some of what happened in Gardner. It will help you, it will help provide context with why I support this voting, yes, on petition 41-25 and it's so important here in Lemonster. In Gardner, from the onset, many people felt betrayed and were hurt and angry at the city mayor, city council, and Bay State Racing. To make matters worse, the way things transpired between all involved was ugly in comparison to how things are going here in Lemonster and we had to go through it twice. Bay State Racing attempted to, its first attempt in Gardner, never gained momentum due to the fact that the proposed site for the project was on protected land that couldn't be used because it was meant to protect our water supply. Unfortunately, we needed to go through the motions and it was extremely taxing. Adding to the mix, the first proposal took place in the election year 2023. However, it However, it was successful kicking it to the curb, and the people of Gardner, including myself, thought that that was the end of the horse racing proposal in our community. Little did we know, Attorney John Stefanini of Bay State Racing had been renting an office in our city, and he was working on buying a different location and had already laid the groundwork with our city and the new... For the new yet similar project. Essentially, he had a year ahead of us before we all knew what was happening. In 2024, Gardner's newly elected mayor seemed to think that the horse race track was a great idea. We were all blindsided, and we were left scrambling. We had a very little, small, very small window of time to research and do all the things that... Time-consuming things that you folks are doing right now. As a proposed location here in Lemonster is preposterous compared to the first location in Gardner. I don't see a growing legs here in Lemonster, but please don't take for granted in the risk of this coming back a second time in a different location like it did in Gardner. Petition 4125 would help to prevent that from happening. Words cannot express how much time, energy, funds that we all had to invest in stopping the racetrack in Gardner. Unfortunately, for its constituents are finding that firsthand right now. Life is difficult enough without trying to find... Without trying to find a healthy balance of family, work, and many other things that we love. Adding the stress of the impact of fighting such a battle throws everything else off balance. I'm sure many of you, including the city council, are currently feeling strains here in Lemonster. For myself, the Bay State horsing racing proposal put a huge strain on my marriage, my small business, and my overall physical and mental well-being. I felt like I had to pause everything important to me and focus mostly on my energy on putting a stop to a horse racing track a mile from my house. If you have a chance, please watch Gardner's public hearing from July 23rd, 2024. You will be able to witness the emotion of how such a proposal affects people of all ages and all walks of life. If passed, petition 4145 would help stop future... Would help stop future threats of horse racing tracks coming to Lemonster and keeping the thoroughbred horse racing industry out of bay, which would help to finally stop it at a state level. I encourage you to ban horse racing in Lemonster and dog racing by passing petition 4125. The majority of Gardner and the city council did not want horse racing track in our community. And it appears to be the same here in Lemonster. Nine communities have said no so far. I'm hoping Lemonster chooses to keep the track record going strong. Thank you for your time.
I want to say a few things first, but I'll keep most of my points at this particular petition. But I think, you know, it would be naive to not consider 4725 as well, even though it's different, they are related. And just acknowledge and echo a lot of the sentiment about the location regarding public health and the ecology and conservation of the area that's been brought up, environmental aspects. But regarding this petition as a ban across the city regarding horse racing and dog racing, there's already on the books a lot to get rid of horse racing in the state. It keeps getting pushed out, but there's a clock on this industry as is. The Kentucky Derby just happened. It did have high viewership, but attendance in person was actually lower than it has been. The industry as a whole is diminishing globally. Just between 2020 and 2025, it's had a compound annual growth rate of negative 3.4%. The industry is dying, and that's exponential because the long-term issue that it has is that it's not acquiring new audiences with younger viewers, mostly related to the animal abuse concerns related to the industry. And so, I mean, that just highlights the problem that this is not a long-term solution for economic development. It's not something that will benefit the city. What's going to happen when this inevitably closes its doors in the not-too-distant future? And so, it's not, you know, helpful in any way. And on top of that, Mass Inc. also related, published something not too long ago, related to in-person sports betting. And they've specifically looked at Springfield and Plainridge, and it's losing money. The in-person sports betting is losing money. And so, the idea that this is going to bring extra income to surrounding businesses as well is just demonstrably false. And so, I am in support of 4125, and I hope that you'll support it as well.
My name is Chloe Graff. I live at 194 Prospect Street. Esteemed members of the council, I thank you for taking the time to listen to us this evening. Over the past few months, I follow discussions around the development of gambling at the toxic landfill quite closely, but this is my first time speaking at the council. I've been fortunate enough to call Lemonster my home for over half a decade now, but I was born and raised in a small town near the Idaho-Washington border. Post Falls was a mill town that grew up in the logging boom of the 20th century, but when the mills shuttered and the timber companies left in the late 80s, their city council was faced with a similar predicament to that facing Lemonster. A large out-of-town consortium came in offering what they said would be an easy boost to the economy: greyhound racing. And it was, for a time. My own brother was hired to work there as a teen, first as a dog handler, and later he paid for college working as a security guard. He also acquired a lifelong gambling habit that he carries with him to this day. And many of my neighbors found themselves in similar positions, lured in by the hope of easy money and the addicting rush of small wins. It wasn't long before the social fabric of the town began to unravel. Church-going members of the community who had never gambled before, such as my childhood friend Sonia's mother, found themselves gambling their mortgage payments, their utility money, their food money. Sonia actually ended up losing her family home and having to move across the state to live with her parents and... Excuse me, her grandparents in Seattle after her mom lost the mortgage money at the track. There were many days when we would share our lunches with classmates who couldn't afford their own. Slowly but surely, property values dropped. Houses were foreclosed upon and sat empty and neglected, while the trailer parks on the edge of town filled up and families were torn apart. Post Falls turned, for lack of a better word, seedy. The track kept on for several years before closing, just before the turn of the century, not even 10 years after opening. It sits empty now, but the impact that the track had on the community still echoes today. And it's for these reasons and for my love of this city that we all now call home that I ask the council to please vote in favor of this petition banning horse and dog racing in Lemonster. Thank you.
Are there any other folks in the public that would like to speak either in support or in opposition to 4125?
Hello. I'm Caitlin Blake, 19 Woodside Avenue, Lemonster. I'm speaking for this petition. The Bay State proposal is damaging to our community in so many ways that others before me have spoken in detail about. I truly believe there are many ways for us to create jobs and opportunities for family fun while not making irreparable damages to our community. We should support existing community centers and developing centers and businesses. Let us focus on what we already have here instead of trying to build something that will ultimately create crime, trash, and other major issues. Thank you for your time.
One last final time. Is there any... Oh, no. You want to speak? Okay.
Good evening, everybody.
Good evening.
I'm from Pittsburgh. Look at the Kentucky Derby, the Preakness, the Belmont. They do a phenomenal job. Racing is only going to be one month here. Six races, they say. It's an entertainment center. What's it going to do for the surrounding area? Pittsburgh. Pittsburgh's a little stagnant from what Lemonster is. Clinton, Marlborough, all the surrounding towns. Think about the Fox for tomorrow. First of all, to correct the situation with the landfill, they're going to put three feet of clay on the top of it, preventing everything from coming up. What's going to come out of this will be absolutely phenomenal for the area. We can't think of today, think of tomorrow.
Sir, could I have your name, please?
Ernie Stakers.
Thank you.
And I've been in this area all my life, and I love going to Saratoga in the summertime. Here it is in New England, well, New England, upstate New York. The place is absolutely grand, and it's full. There is no rioting. There's no... Nothing that goes wrong. It's all first class. Something to think about for tomorrow.
I'm going to the public one last time. Are there any folks who still want to speak on 41-25?
639 Mechanic Street, Philip Valeri. I got something to think about for today. I think it's just, you know, I wasn't going to comment today, but I heard that gentleman who came up kind of saying how, you know, I don't know if I'm going to stay here or not, you know, raise a family here and how there's like lacking of entertainment for certain age demographic. I just... I think the thought for today is you can't compare... It's apples and oranges to compare Mason's bowling or the roller skate rink or, you know, the wonderful driving range that's gone that was on the, you know, border of Lancaster and into Lemonster. You can't compare family-friendly, happy times that don't involve gambling with something that at its very core is about gambling. So I just wanted to correct that record, that there's a very big difference between a theater, a playhouse, a museum, a children's museum, an art museum, a archaeological museum, a history museum, a bowling alley versus a facility that exists for the sole core purpose, in my understanding, for sports betting and wagering and putting your hard-earned money on the line. For what? I have many people in my life who gamble. I have many people in my life who play scratch tickets all the time, and I don't think it's a good use of their money. I don't think it's a good use of their time. And I just... I'm just very disturbed, as a young adult, that other young adults feel that this is something that could equate to any of those other activities I listed.
Can I clarify what I meant?
Sure.
Tony DiMano, 22 Witchfield Pines Drive. I just meant that I think the opportunity of the space the other 359 days of the year as a festival grounds or something that we could do like what they do at Kimball's with like the classic car show and ice cream or something like that. I am just concerned about that landfill not being developed, just, you know, staying toxic and just sort of rotting there. I'm in favor of sort of any sort of development there, and I'm just concerned that I don't want to go too quickly into limiting what we can or can't do there. So I'm not trying to say gambling is for, you know, the same as a bowling alley or anything like that. I obviously don't want kids going out into these gambling dens or things like that. But I do just want to understand better and not kneecap ourselves into giving up something that we can use for almost a full year. And so, I just wanted to clarify that point.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Ardinger, did you have a comment?
I wanted to clarify that I was not aware that people could speak twice for public comments. I was not aware of that.
Okay, sir. 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 All right. I understand, but we're not going to get into a debate here tonight.
That's not normal.
Well, you know what? If anybody else wants to clarify anything or speak, I'd be happy to let them because I think it's important that everybody who wants to speak is heard. So I'm sorry you took offense at that, but I think it's fair.
My name is Karen Valeri. I live at 639 Mechanic, right where the proposed finish line would be. At the beginning of 2025, I had no idea my life would entail this. My neighbors, my fellow Lemonster friends, and I have been unnecessarily put through anxiousness, loss of sleep over this ridiculous proposal. We are not confused. We are not attacking the opposition. We do not want gambling in the form of horse racing. We do not want off-the-track betting in a residential neighborhood. Opponents are gravely concerned with the environmental disaster which could happen when disturbing the capped-off landfill. Opponents are concerned with increased traffic on an already dangerous road. And I just want to say, had I known, this would have been in the thought of the community when I bought this house in 1998, we would have never bought in Lemonster. Thank you.
Madam Chairwoman, it's 7 o'clock. So we're going to...
Start our meeting.
Yeah, we're going to start our meeting, then we'll recess, and you can finish the hearing, okay? So if you'll join us in the Pledge of Allegiance, please.
The Pledge of Allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the honor for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, omnipotent, infinite, and just as for all.
And now I'll take attendance of the councilors, starting with Councilor David Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Present.
Councilor Arninger.
Present.
Councilor Noseworthy.
Present.
Councilor Tossi.
Present.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Here.
Councilor Robbins.
Present.
Councilor Frida.
Present.
And I shall be mark present. All nine councilors are in attendance. Does the chairwoman of records have a report?
I do, Mr. President. The records of April 28th, 2025, the minutes, I'm sorry, I find to be in good standing, and I ask to be placed on record.
That may be done unless anybody has an objection. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
No, no, no. I'm good.
Okay. I'll entertain a motion to recess. Councilor Shalfo Zephyr, second, Councilor Robbins, all in favor, please recognize usual manner. We are in recess, and Madam Chairwoman, you can resume your hearing.
Thank you very much. Councilor Ardinger, did you have a comment?
Thank you. I apologize, but I'm not going to... There's a lot of issues, both pro and con, with this petition. And I think when we get to the actual petition, I will probably speak more on that. But as I was reading this petition, and it says that any associated betting or wagering anywhere within the city of Lemonster would be prohibited, okay? Now, my question is, in 2022, as I read that, maybe I'm wrong, but as I read that, in 2022, I believe the legislature approved online gambling, and it includes horse racing as well as sports betting. And how are you going to enforce no betting anywhere in Lemonster? I think the petition is flawed in that respect and should be amended.
Well, that through the chair to Councilor Ardinger, that was the point that Councilor Robbins made earlier. There was a typo. My understanding is that the petition reads that the city council prohibit all horse and dog racing and any associated betting and wagering on horses and dogs, not throughout the city. It's associated with horse and dog racing.
Doesn't say that as I read it. I'm sorry.
The petition, to be clear, is... Has the correct word, associate.
Associated.
Associate.
Yeah.
And I think the fair reading of that language is that it is qualified by the fact that it relates to horse or dog racing in Lemonster. So that does not prohibit somebody from, you know, race... Betting on off-track betting on their device that is someplace else in the country. So I think we're okay with that.
Okay.
Thank you.
Thank you.
You all set?
Yep.
Thank you.
Okay, good. All right. So one last time, going up to the public. Is there anybody who wants to speak on petition 4125?
I did want to address that concern and about the gentleman's concern with the use of the landfill and it not being prohibited. But my understanding of this petition is that it is specifically about prohibiting horse racing and dog racing and gambling on such, and it has not... It is not specifically related to the landfill itself? Is that correct?
That is correct. That's my understanding.
So I just wanted to clarify that.
Sure. And also, just to correct one thing, this is a public hearing. I'm the chairperson of the public hearing, and who can speak is really up to the discretion of the chairperson. It's not the public forum where people are allowed to speak once for two minutes. So just to... It's a little bit of a, you know, fine line or fine distinction, but I want to make sure that I clarified that. Okay. Is there anybody else, one last time, who wants to speak? Okay. All right. So at this point... All right, so, at this point, with nobody else in the public, any councillors have any comments or questions at this point? Councillor Pauline Cormier.
I just want to thank everybody who's come here and has come here over the past several meetings, on both sides. Everybody has been very respectful, very helpful. Everyone has provided a ton of information. I've done more reading on this than I hope to ever have to do again. But it has been helpful, and I just want to thank everyone who's been here and has been here all along. There's no animosity, there's no yelling and screaming and shouting. You've made your point brilliantly and articulated it on both sides, on both sides. So I just, on behalf of myself, and I'm sure the members of the council would agree, it's been absolute pleasure, not that we're dealing with all this, but with the way that everyone in the community and everybody's come to the meetings have conducted themselves. I also want to thank our council president, who's been very good with overseeing this and coordinating and giving everyone the opportunity to be heard. And thank you to Councillor Shalfo Zephyr, who stepped up at a very, very difficult time to lead this committee. So, again, I just wanted to take that minute to say thank you.
Thank you, councillor. All right, so at this point, forty-one dash twenty-five, we will keep the public hearing open. We will schedule our next public hearing on our next meeting, five twenty-seven, which is a Tuesday, it's the day after Memorial Day, excuse me. So at this point, that's what we will do, is leave the public hearing open.
Okay. Thank you, councillor. Thank you for, and thank you, as echoing what Councillor Cormier indicated, stepping up into this in the last minute after a tragic situation with our fellow councillor.
Thank you.
Appreciate that. All right, we'll now conduct the public forum. The public forum is an opportunity for any member of the audience to speak on a matter specifically listed on the council agenda. Speakers will be asked to come to the microphone and state their formal name and address, along with identifying the specific item or items they wish to address. Each speaker is respectfully asked to keep their comments within a two-minute timeframe. The council will not be responding or answering any questions, however, at the direction of the council president, clarification may be given. The first speaker signed up, and I realize that some of you may have signed up specifically for forty-one dash twenty-five. You're welcome to speak again in the public forum, if you wish, but the first one that's signed up is Caitlin Smith.
Good evening, councillors. Caitlin Smith, one nine-four Prospect Street. First, I would like to make a comment concerning petition forty-seven twenty-five, a petition to create the Fairgrounds Overlay District. In case anyone present in the audience has not had a chance to read said petition, I will share a few details. Among other things, the zoning overlay would define their sports bar as essentially a small casino that also has off-track betting and simulcasting. They would also be able to build an apartment block or a large hotel. There are no setbacks for retaining walls or buildings, and no height restrictions of any kind on buildings or structures, and they would be allowed to have amplified noise and permanent outdoor lighting. Their HCA specifically says that they would be raising the height of the entire landfill to three hundred and sixty feet, twenty feet higher than it is now, and an average of ten feet higher than Mechanic Street. This would be a tremendous eyesore that would severely impact the quality of life for residents in the area, and I urge the City Council on the strongest possible terms to reject any form of petition forty-seven twenty-five. I also want to state for the record that Bay State or one of its affiliates paid college students to collect signatures for their Fairgrounds petition outside of grocery stores in the region. I have spoken to them, and so have many others. These students were allegedly being paid twenty-two dollars and fifty cents per hour plus one dollar per signature. They seem to have little idea of what the Fairgrounds even is or how to explain it, with one young man allegedly telling a resident that the city will remove the landfill waste after the location was approved. If they are making one dollar by telling a stranger that the city of Leominster would fully remediate the site, a project that could easily cost a billion dollars, who knows what else they promised to get thirteen hundred people to sign this petition? I trust that the City Council can tell the difference between manufactured community support and the community opposition who do the research and the legwork on our own time for free, out of love for our city and our neighbors.
Thank you, Ms. Smith. The next person who's signed up is Lisa Nugent. Thank you, Lisa. And Denise Sutton is next on the list, you're two, well, two for two. Anthony DiMano. He may have left. Yeah. Felix Zakel. All right. Linda Jean Hall. Thank you, Linda. And last but not least, on the signup list is Tom Farnsworth. Okay, thank you, Mr. Farnsworth. All right, that's the list of people who signed up, but I still, it's still open to anybody who wants to speak on any agenda item this evening.
Hi, Melissa Bible, one seventy-eight Fifth Street. I'm here speaking in opposition to forty-seven twenty-five, for the multiple reasons that we've all shared and stated. And then I'm also here to appreciate the discussion that is being requested under new business and letter from the mayor, that he is requesting the City Council discuss its desired mechanism, should we need additional funds, by which the City Council will report. And this is obviously for the Fallbrook School Project, which is estimated to cost the city about six hundred thousand dollars a year, if and when it's approved. I think the timing of this is more than coincidental. Where oh where are we going to get six hundred thousand dollars a year? But the other thing that I feel is really unfortunate is that you're being provided two options, a debt exclusion or using the city's excess levy capacity, when in reality we know that the city has the funding to be able to provide a school for our kids. If you look at the capital repairs that Essers Fund provided to the city for school buildings, the school through Essers saved the city millions of dollars in capital repairs, in HVAC work, in roofing, in all kinds of other mechanisms. So to then have the city come back and say, six hundred thousand dollars, where oh where will we find it? You've already saved more than that in Essers Repair that was provided by the school district, which was really the cost of the city and not the cost of the school district. So as you go into this discussion, discussion's great, I think we also all need to be aware that there's probably more than two options available to the city. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Bible. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the City Council in our public forum? Step right up. Just your name and address, please.
I will. My name is Sally Craigan. I live at one one-three-eight Oak Hill Road in Fitchburg, just over the line. I am a City councillor in Fitchburg. I am here tonight because I had been reached out to by a number of residents of Leominster, where my father's family had a business for almost a hundred years, and they requested that I come to this meeting tonight and learn more about this propose, this proposal. And speaking from the City councillor's side, economic development is what drives our community. We are a twin city. We are fused together. But this Fairgrounds project is dismal, and the folks who are proposing it do not have a track record of achieving this kind of success that they are promising in full-page ads in the Sentinel. So I work full-time also as a journalist, and as a journalist, the facts are just not checking out, guys. So I welcome anyone. Again, please reach out to me, I'm in the City Council in Fitchburg. I'm glad you guys are discussing it. I really hope it's a no. I drove by last week and saw all the vents, they go right down to the bottom of the swamp, and I just don't see how you can develop something. I don't see how you guys can do it without creating cancer clusters, without really putting your residents in danger, and my grandchildren, and your grandchildren, and your great-great-to-the-seventh-power grandchildren. So I know you guys love your city, I love my city, and I love Leominster, too. So please vote no. Don't let this happen.
Thank you, Ms. Craigan. Is there any other member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? And for a second time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? And a third and final time, is there any member of the public that wishes to address the City Council on an agenda item this evening? Seeing none, I'll declare the public forum closed, and thank you all very much for the way you conducted yourself once again. I appreciate that, as well as I'm sure the other councillors do. All right, back to our regular agenda, starting off with communications from the mayor.
Dean J. Mazarello may request that the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars be made to the Department of Public Works' capital account, the same to be transferred from the...
Sorry about that. I'm gonna reread that. Dean J. Mazarello, the mayor, requests that the amount of seven thousand five hundred dollars be made to the Department of Public Works' capital account, the same to be transferred from the Essex and deficiency account regarding road safety analysis.
C seventy-five is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Thank you, Mr. President. First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C seventy-five has been given regular course. C seventy-six.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that the council vote to establish a donation account for the All-American City Competition. The All-American City Award recognizes communities that leverage civic engagement, collaboration, inclusiveness, and innovation to successfully address local issues.
C seventy-six is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C seventy-six has been regular course. Moving on to C seventy-seven.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that an appropriation of fifty thousand dollars be made to the Police Department Overtime Account, the same to be transferred from the Essex and Deficiency Account.
C seventy-seven is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C seventy-seven has been given regular course. C seventy-eight.
Dean J. Mazarello, excuse me, Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that an appropriation of sixty thousand dollars be made to the Fire Department Expense Account, the same to be transferred from the Essex and Deficiency Account.
C seventy-eight is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
C seventy-eight has been given regular course. C seventy-nine.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that an appropriation of seven million one hundred thirty-six thousand two hundred and seven dollars be made to the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Sewer Department Budget, the same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year twenty twenty-six receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E.
C seventy-nine is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, Mr. President, regular course, and we need to set up a public hearing for this on May twenty-seventh at...
I'm gonna suggest May twenty-seventh at six o'clock.
Six o'clock. Okay.
Well, I'm gonna check with the members of the committee real quickly, okay? Councillor Tossi?
I agree.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
All in favor of setting five twenty-seven at six o'clock for a public hearing on C seventy-nine? Please recognize usual manner. All right, that may be done. Moving on to C eighty.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that a total appropriation of six million nine hundred nineteen thousand nine hundred and six dollars be made to the fiscal year twenty twenty-six Water Budget, Water Department Budget, the same amount to be raised slash offset by fiscal year twenty twenty-six receipts as authorized by Massachusetts General Law, Chapter forty-four, Section fifty-three E.
C eighty is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, first time on the calendar, regular course, and we need to set up a public hearing for May twenty-seventh.
I'm gonna suggest six oh five. Councillor Tossi, okay with that?
I agree.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You hear the recommendation of Finance to give C eighty regular course and set up a hearing on five twenty-seven at six oh five PM. All in favor, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed, six to nine to zero. Okay. Moving on to C eighty-one.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that the fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget, which totals one hundred and seventy-eight million six hundred and ninety thousand one hundred and two dollars, be adopted. One hundred and seventy-eight million eighty-six thousand four hundred and eighty-nine dollars to be raised by fiscal year twenty twenty-six revenues. Two hundred and seventy-six thousand five hundred dollars to be transferred from the Gallagher Building Special Revenue Fund. Sixty-seven thousand one hundred and thirteen dollars to be transferred from the Cemetery Trust Fund. Ten thousand to be transferred from Recreation Revolving Fund, and two hundred and fifty thousand from Overlay, regarding attached fiscal year twenty twenty-six budget document.
C eighty-one is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, Mr. President, regular course, and May twenty-seventh at...
Six-ten. Councillor Tossi?
I agree.
Councillor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
The recommendation is to give C eighty-one regular course and set up a hearing on five twenty-seven at six-ten PM. All in favor, please recognize usual manner. All right, moving on to C eighty-three.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that an appropriation of twenty-five thousand dollars be made to the library's operating account, the same to be transferred from the library's personal budget, regarding to help the library meet the materials expenditure requirements set by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
C eighty-three is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
Once again, first time on the calendar, regular course.
C eighty-three has been given regular course. Moving on to C eighty-four.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that an appropriation of five thousand dollars be made to the library's operating account, the same to be transferred from the library's state aid to public library account. Regarding this transfer, will allow the library to continue to provide a wide array of events and programs for Leominster residents.
C eighty-four is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, C eighty-four has been given regular course. Moving on to C eighty-five.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests that an appropriation of fifteen thousand dollars be made to the library's operating account, the same to be transferred from the library's state aid to public library's account. Regarding this transfer, regarding this transfer will help the library meet the materials expenditure requirements set by the Massachusetts Board of Library Commissioners.
C eighty-five is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
First time on the calendar, regular course.
And C eighty-five has been given regular course. Moving on to appointments, and C eighty-two.
Dean J. Mazarello, mayor, requests the appointment of the following. Cemetery Commission to expire for fifteen twenty-eight, twenty twenty-eight, Brian Le Blank, of Leominster.
C eighty-two is referred to the Chairwoman of Ways and Means.
Thank you, Mr. President. I'm gonna ask for regular course, and I'm going to request a, that we contact Mr. Le Blank and see if we can have him in for an interview, as this is a new appointment.
Okay. Why don't we look towards June nine on this one?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. Moving on to petitions, first time on the agenda, starting with forty-nine dash twenty-five.
Gregory S. Chapdelaine, purchasing agent, and Jennifer Reddington, comptroller, requests to allow the purchasing agent to award a contract for a six-year period for an energy consulting firm. Provide advisory services to the city for negotiation of energy contracts, advisory services on what energy savings the city should undertake, and all other issues dealing with the energy supply services in the private market.
Forty-nine dash twenty-five is referred to the Chairman of Finance.
That is also first time on the calendar, regular course.
Very well, forty-nine twenty-five has been given regular course. Moving on to matters before the City Council, is the Chairman of Finance ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President, the financial report. Free cash was fifteen million eight thousand eight hundred ninety-one dollars. We have since spent eight million eight hundred and seventy-eight thousand three hundred and sixty-one dollars and eighty-four cents. Still have a balance of six million one hundred and thirty thousand five hundred and twenty-nine dollars and sixteen cents. The City of Leominster's Stabilization Fund, we began with a balance of twenty-two million nine hundred and twenty-seven thousand five hundred and fifty-three dollars and eighty-one cents. We've earned interest in the amount of four hundred and seventy-two thousand twenty-three dollars and seventy-one cents. We paid back everything we borrowed, plus a little bit extra that we added to it, which gives us a balance of twenty-three million five hundred and fifteen thousand two hundred and twenty-seven dollars and seven cents. The capital stabilization began with and still has a balance of two million one hundred ninety-three thousand one hundred and ninety-one dollars and sixty-two cents. And the opioid stabilization fund began with a balance of five hundred and eighteen thousand seven hundred and three dollars and twenty cents. We received proceeds from the state in the amounts of, in the amount of a hundred and twenty-six thousand eight hundred and forty-two dollars and sixty-seven cents. We've spent a hundred and thirty-three thousand, and that leaves us with a balance of five hundred and twelve thousand five forty-five and eighty-seven. And that is the financial report.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Any questions by the council? All right, I'm gonna ask if there's no objection to move C seventy-three to the front of the calendar, and take up the appointment of, or the confirmation of Denise Sutton. Madam Chairwoman?
Thank you, Mr. President. Ladies and gentlemen of the council, we had the opportunity this evening to interview Denise Sutton. This is regarding C dash seventy-three for the appointment to the Cultural Commission with a term to expire on April fifteenth, twenty twenty-eight. He had the opportunity to meet Ms. Sutton this evening. She is a longtime Leominster resident, although she did leave us for a period of time, but we're gonna forgive her of that. did leave us for a period of time, but we're going to forgive her of that. She's been a longtime volunteer. She raised her family here. She has an outstanding resume, and I'm sure everyone has a copy of that. It would be my pleasure, Mr. President, to ask the council to appoint Ms. Sutton, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Counselor Oringa?
I agree.
And Counselor David Cormier?
I also agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation to confirm the appointment of Denise Sutton. Is there any additional discussion? Counselor Frida?
Yeah, just a quick comment. I think it's great when we have somebody come before us that has been volunteering all along somewhere else in the city. She knows. I'm sure she's extremely familiar with the Cultural Commission, so I just think it's a great opportunity to put people on boards that really have an interest in serving the community.
Okay, thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? All right, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Oringa?
Yay.
Counselor Noseworthy?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
Shall be recorded as yay by a vote of nine to zero. The confirmation is approved. Congratulations. All right, back to finance. And C-65, is the chairman ready to report?
Yes, Mr. President. C-65, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $15,000 be made to the fuel depot expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have, I have a letter here that came in from Jake Fleming regarding this appropriation. This appropriation will be used to cover fuel deliveries for the remainder of the fiscal year. And the recalibration service of the dispensing fuel pump meters, the fuel depot account, serves as a placeholder to pay for fuel deliveries for all city departments at the beginning of each month and sometimes twice per month. At the end of each month, fuel usage is calculated and charged to each respective department. In tracking this account, the amount of fuel being purchased by the fuel depot account was more than being billed to the city's departments. After an internal audit of the fuel deliveries and billings, we requested a service company come out to inspect the fuel pumps, specifically the meters on the dispensing end of the pump to gauge accuracy. The review found that one of the meters was under metering by nearly 10% and another by 6%, and the other two being within reasonable tolerances. We have scheduled the service for the pumps and will add this calibration to our routine maintenance schedule going forward to ensure accuracy. We'd be glad to answer any questions or providing additional information. So that is the reason for the shortfall, and it would be my recommendation that we would grant C-65, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
Counselor Shalfo Zephyr?
Yep, thank you. Through the chair to the, with three counselor. Why didn't the rest of the council get a copy of that letter? I mean, that's got detailed good information in it that would be helpful.
When I met with Jen, she gave this to me, so. She didn't go through the city clerk's office.
That doesn't really matter. It addresses the question about that particular communication. Wouldn't you think that that would be?
Yeah.
Information that would be appropriate to distribute through the clerk to the rest of the city council?
Yeah, I've spoke to the mayor's office about these things so that we can make sure everybody keeps, everybody gets them. I put it in my packet and I never gave her a copy of it, so.
Counselor Frida?
I don't know. I think I asked the same question at the last meeting, but why, you just read a letter that took how long? I mean, it's not a big thing, and we know we're going to support it because it's obviously something wrong, has to be replaced. But you just read that whole letter. We're supposed to absorb everything and then vote. We can't keep doing that. This isn't the right way to do business.
Yeah, I've mentioned it to the mayor already. Again, I know he listens to the meetings, and I've made it clear that we don't want to do business like this, that I shouldn't have to chase around for the information either. I got to work all day like everybody else, and this is what, this is what I have to do. And he understands, and he, I noticed in this week's packet, all these communications have a lot more information, and I've asked that going forward, we have all the information so that I don't have to run around gathering everything. It should all be in there, and he agrees.
Through the chair to the, to the chair of finance. When did you meet with Jen?
I think it was last, late Thursday afternoon last week.
So it could have been in our packet. You could have given it to Maribel after to put it in our packet when we picked ours up. Okay, now we'll go to the next one. We're going to get the same thing probably.
Any other questions or comments? All right, so the recommendation on the floor is to grant C-65. All those in favor, please recognize usual manner. Anyone opposed by a vote of nine to zero? Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $15,000 be made to the fuel depot expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anybody opposed by a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C-66.
C-66, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $21,600 be made to the assessing evaluation expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. I, I spoke with Jen, and she indicated to me that this is something that is done, the DOR requires every three years that we, a certain percentage of the cities, the assets are, they do a personal property assessment on them, and they have to go out to a third-party vendor for these, and this is the expense for that third-party vendor. So it would be my request that we grant C-66, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Counselor Tossi?
I agree also.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-66. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-66, please recognize usual manner. C-66 is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $21,600 be made to the assessing valuation expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-67.
C-67, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $25,000 be made to the ambulance billing account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is something that was sent to us from Nicole LaPlante. The collector's office would like to ask for an appropriation, the amount of $25,000. This is to pay for ambulance billing for the remainder of the fiscal year. After speaking with Jen, I guess that the higher amount, which she has indicated to me, is hard to determine at the, at the beginning of the fiscal year. They don't really know what the number is going to be, but the higher amount does indicate that they have done a lot of billing, which is good. We've brought in a lot of revenue, and it's all based on how much they collect is how the billing goes out. So there has been a lot of billing this year. It's been a very busy year for our ambulance service, and it would be my recommendation that we grant C-67, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Thank you. Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
All right, so there's an unanimous recommendation, and I know that Counselor Shalfo Zephyr has a question or comment.
Yep. No, I have a question through the chair of the finance chair. At our last meeting, I had a couple of questions about this particular communication, because this is coming from the treasurer collector's office, billing for ambulance services. My question was, in the past, I thought it was the fire department and Chief Sidlow who would ask for these kinds of appropriations, you know, for excess billing. So my question was twofold. You know, has it changed, and I guess why?
As far as I know, it's all, it's all administered by a third party, and the treasurer of the collector's office is the one that, the one that's apparently in charge of all this at this point, so.
Did the fire department used to do it and then turn this over in a?
I think many years ago they may have, but it's not anymore. It's a third-party vendor that does it all now, so. And they bill by the volume. So the volume has been very high, so therefore they have this overage.
Okay, I still, I have some follow-up questions, but I think I'll follow up with the fire chief through the mayor's office.
Okay.
I'm confused.
Would you like the finance chair to look into that?
I'll do it.
Okay.
I'm good.
Thank you, Counselor. Anyone else? All right, you've heard the unanimous recommendation once again of finance to grant C-67. All in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. By a vote of nine to zero, C-67 has been granted. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $25,000 be made to the ambulance billing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is for the increased costs in ambulance billing. This would cover expenses through the end of the fiscal year. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anybody opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-68.
C-68, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $32,500 be made to the collector's billing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have a letter here dated April 7, 2025. The collector's office would like to request an additional appropriation of the amount of $32,500. This money is necessary to pay for printing and postage for real estate, personal property, and excise billings for the remainder of the fiscal year. There have been gradual increases over the years in the number of invoices being printed and mailed, as well as multiple increases in the postage rate. Our office has not adjusted the budget to consider these increases over the years. Please let me know if you need any additional information. It would be my request that we grant C-68, and I ask that you check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Robert Tossi?
I agree also.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of finance to grant C-68. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-68, please recognize usual manner. C-68 has been granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $32,500 be made to the collector's billing expense account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C-69.
C-69, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that the appropriation of $60,000 be made to the paramedics overtime account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is from the fire chief. The fire department requests a sum of $60,000 for overtime for paramedics. I am requesting this amount to be transferred at the discretion of the comptroller's office. After speaking with the fire chief, it's been the same story for, since we've implemented the paramedics. There are eight positions in reality, but there are only seven of them filled, so they fill that other position with overtime. That is a policy decision that the mayor and the fire chief and the finance team has made, that they feel it's cheaper to do it that way. And also, they have to backfill with overtime for when someone's out sick and vacations and whatnot, so that is the reason for this overage or for this request, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee. It would be my recommendation that we grant C-69.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Tossi?
I agree also.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-69. Is there any discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-69, please recognize usual manner. C-69 has been granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $60,000 be made to the paramedics overtime account, same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? The order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-70.
C-70, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $110,000 be made to the police department light account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. This is something that, there is a letter attached, and I'll read it. When we moved into the new police station in November of 2023, we processed an electric bill from National Grid for $8,032.09. This was the only bill that we received from National Grid until February of 2025. National Grid advised us that there was an error on their side, and our bill was, in quotations, "stuck in the back office." Kelly Valley and the comptroller's office have been in communication with our National Grid representative to resolve the issue. Our current balance is $73,000. We have also completed paperwork to request a credit transfer from 29 Church Street to 116th Central Street for $36,000. In order to cover the total expenses for bills which we were never sent and to forecast our electric usage for the remainder of the fiscal year, and I requested appropriation of $110,000, so it would be my recommendation that we pay these bills, and if they have, they have rectified this problem, and it would be my request that we grant C-70, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
And Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-70. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-70, please recognize usual manner. C-70 has been granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $110,000 be made to the police department light account, the same amount to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yay.
Yay.
Anyone opposed? By a vote of nine to zero, the order is adopted. Moving on to C-71.
I will be abstaining in asking the clerk of finance. I have an immediate family member in the fire department.
Very well.
Thank you, Mr. President. C-71, Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, request that an appropriation of $250,000 be to the fire department public safety overtime account, the same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. We have a, a letter. It's actually addressed to Dean J. Mazzarella, mayor, from Robert A. Sidlow, the fire chief, basically saying, Dear Mayor Mazzarella, the fire department requests a sum of $250,000 for overtime costs. The fire department's overtime spent to date is related to normal contract obligations, one member requiring duty injury coverage, long-term military activation in drills, recalls for residential fires, and mutual aid. The overtime funds requested will be used for the above reasons, along with the normal vacancies caused by sickness, personal leave, and vacation leave. I am requesting the amount to be transferred at the discretion of the comptroller's office. Thank you for your continued support. Should you have any further questions or concerns, please contact my office. Again, that's from Chief Sidlow. It would be my recommendation, and I'd ask you to check with the third member of finance to grant C-71.
Thank you. Madam Chairwoman, Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-71. Is there any additional discussion? Counselor Frida?
I don't necessarily disagree with this because I do understand it, but I'm going to go back to the points that I've made over and over again about subcommittee meetings because the public doesn't know that we're doing this until five minutes before we vote. So if there's any member of the public that has a question about $250,000 in overtime, we used to have a gentleman that would come here on a regular basis for a long time because he was concerned about the fire department, and I'm going back years. But the point is, there used to be subcommittee meetings, and those subcommittee meetings were in the middle of the two weeks, and if something came up that, that people were aware of who could come to that meeting, they'd be able to come here tonight and say, you know, can you look at that again? Or question anything that we're looking at. Does the finance committee meeting, does the finance committee even know what these are? Are you getting, are you getting information from the finance chair?
Yes.
So you're getting, you're getting the information?
No, I ask, and, and we get confirmation of what it's for. Basically, the explanation that you get here and then.
But you don't have any? But you don't have any.
Obviously, those.
You can't have a discussion about, about whether you all support it or not. There's never a discussion about supporting it.
That's what, we could have discussed it here. This is overtime for the fire department.
Right.
So, yes, I, I saw the letter from Chief Sidlo. I just read the letter from Chief Sidlo. I understand what he needs the funds for, and in my opinion, I, I support it.
Do we, do we not think that maybe the public should have a little bit of a heads up on a lot of these major numbers? I mean, I, I agree with this. I understand it. We've been through it a number of times. But I'm, I'm going back to old school. I mean, we had some committee meetings, and people had opportunities to understand. This is the tax dollar paying these things. And, and it's, I'm just going to bring it up again. It gets me nowhere, but I'm just going to bring it up again because I think I just have a concern with it.
You all set, Councilor?
I'm all set.
Okay. Anyone else? All right. All those in favor of C-71, please recognize the usual manner. C-71 is granted by a vote of eight to zero. Does the chairwoman have an order?
I do, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $250,000 be made to the fire department public safety overtime account, the same to be transferred from the excess and deficiency account. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
The order is adopted. Any nays? The order is adopted by a vote of eight to zero. Moving on to C-74 and our.
C dash seventy-four, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests an appropriation of $25,000 and $3,800 be made to the insurance reimbursement and September flood account respectively, same amount to be transferred from the state flood infrastructure funds. The reason for this is because there is a $25,000 deductible for everything that we had to file a claim on, and there is one bill for $3,800 that is outstanding, that came in, that is not covered by insurance, and that is the reason for C dash seventy-four. And I'll ask that we grant, my request would be that we grant C dash seventy-four, and I'll ask that you check with members of my committee.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
And Councilor Tossi.
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the finance committee to grant C-74. Is there any further discussion? Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yeah, thank you. Through the chair of the finance chair. So the state flood infrastructure funds, I don't think I've ever heard of that account. But what would be helpful is if you would ask the comptroller to provide some detail on that, what's gone into it, what's gone out.
Sure.
And what the sources of funding are.
Okay.
Yeah. Detail on that would be really interesting. Thank you.
Yep, sure thing. Thanks.
Anybody else? Okay, seeing none, all those in favor of granting C-74, please recognize the usual manner. C-74 is granted by a vote of nine to zero. Does the chairman have an order?
Yes, Mr. President. Order that the sum of $25,000 and $3,800 be made to the insurance reimbursement and September flood account respectively, the same amount to be transferred from the state flood infrastructure funds. Move for the adoption of the order.
You've heard the request to adopt the order. Is there any additional discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor of adopting the order, please indicate by saying yea.
Yea.
Any nays? The order is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to ways and means and reappointments, C-72. Unless there's any objection by anybody in the council, we could take these in block. Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President.
Mr. President, I, I have no objection to taking them in block as long as the record will reflect that I am abstaining from the disability commission one. I'm not going to vote on my own.
Okay. The record can be so noted. Madam Chairwoman.
Thank you, Mr. President. C dash seventy-two, Dean J. Mazzarella Mayor requests the reappointment of, request the reappointment of the following. On the council on aging term to expire four fifteen twenty-eight, Marlene Tebow of Central Street in Leominster, Patricia Valli of Arrowhead Road, Leominster, and Maria Malari of Biscayne Street, Leominster. To the conservation commission term to expire April fifteenth, 2028, Stephanie Quinlan of Lincoln Street and Le, on Lincoln Street in Leominster. To the disability commission term to expire April fifteenth, 2028, David Cormier of Deer Run, Leominster. Planning board term to expire April fifteenth, 2030, Dean Valier, Main Street, Leominster. And, oh, that completes the list. I would ask that all these members be reappointed, and I'd ask you to check with members of my committee.
Councilor Arndinger.
I agree.
And Councilor Cormier, with the exception of your own appointment.
Yes, thank you, Mr. President. I agree.
Okay, so we have a unanimous recommendation almost on all of these. Any discussion? Okay, this will be by roll call, starting with Councilor David Cormier, understanding you're not voting on disability.
Yes, yea.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yea.
Councilor Arndinger.
Yea.
Councilor Noseworthy.
Yea.
Councilor Tossi.
Yea.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr.
Yea.
Councilor Robbins.
Yea.
Councilor Frida.
Yea.
As she been recorded as yea. So we have a nine to zero on all of them except for disability commission. David Cormier is eight to zero. Moving on to C-73, we did handle the Sutton appointment, and with respect to Ms. Obeng, Madam Chairwoman, six nine at six fifteen. Okay, for further interview?
Thank you, Mr. President. And I would just ask the assistant clerk to send out a, an email and see if that is okay with Ms. Bang.
Okay. All those in favor of that interview at that date and time, please recognize the usual manner. Nine to zero, thank you. Moving on to legal affairs. Madam Chairwoman, are you ready on thirty-five twenty-five?
I am. Petition thirty-five twenty-five, Kenneth Delgado, Eight Highland Street, Lancaster, Mass. Request to amend the current lot width under zoning district RB for two family dwellings. The amendment would consist of changing the minimum required width from eighty feet to fifty feet for two family dwellings. The current frontage requirement for two family dwellings in RB is fifty feet and eighty feet. Lot width requirement would create pork chop lots, which the city does not favor. Lot configuration would be rectangular and consistent if both frontage and lot width were equal regarding fourteen twenty, fourteen twenty-six, fifteen twenty-eight, fourteen thirty-two, Central Street, Leominster, Mass. So this petition, I think, was originally filed in February twenty-four, 2025. It's been giving further time. We had a public hearing at our last meeting on four twenty-eight, and the public hearing on this is continued to five twenty-seven, which is the Tuesday after Memorial Day at six forty-five PM. I had asked for some additional information. The acting planning director did write a memo about this particular thing, so I wanted to have that before making a recommendation. So the public hearing is continued, so I would ask for the time.
The, the planning board hearing on this matter, no, wait a minute, wrong one. I just want to see when that's scheduled.
Yep.
Thirty-five dash twenty-five. Do we know?
You know what? I have it somewhere, yeah.
Yeah, I don't know either. All right, so the recommendation is further time into public hearing on, it's already established on five twenty-seven, 2025, so it's just a matter of further time. I'll check with other members of your committee. Councilor Tossi.
I agree.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
I agree.
So unanimous recommendation on thirty-five dash twenty-five is for, Councilor Robbins?
Just to your comment, Mr. President, the planning board had their meeting on this one already and voted six to one to make a positive.
You're right. You're right.
Yeah, they did.
Okay, but we are waiting for more material that Councilor Shalfo Zephyr requested.
We do have the material, so we'll be all set.
All right.
On the twenty-seven.
So, good. So unanimous recommendation is six forty, further time.
Further time.
Any further discussion? All in favor of further time, please recognize the usual manner? All right. Thank you very much, Councilor Robbins. Further time by vote of nine to zero. All right, the next one I am recused from, so Councilor Frida, it's all yours.
Thank you, Mr. President. This is in regards to a special legal affairs committee. I'm not going to read the, the summary, but this was a request by the mayor to have a hearing on the Middlesex Medicine Facility that has not been complying with any of the recommendations and contract negotiations that were made at the time of opening. We did have an initial hearing. It's continued, and Councilor Shalfo Zephyr was not available for a few days, so we are hoping that we will be doing this on the twenty-second of May at five o'clock, pending the ability of the majority of attorneys and so forth that were, that they're able to be here for that meeting. So the recommendation would be for further time with continued hearing on the twenty-second of May at five o'clock.
Okay, so the recommendation is, would you like me to check with the other member of, other members of your committee? The request is for further time?
Yep.
Councilor Shalfo Zephyr?
I agree.
And Councilor Robbins?
All set.
Okay, you've heard the unanimous recommendation of the special legal affairs subcommittee to grant C dash fifty further time. All those in favor, please recognize in the usual manner. By a vote of seven to zero, that, this matter, C dash fifty, is given further time with a subcommittee hearing on May twenty-second, 2025. Do we have a date on that, a time on that? I'm sorry.
Five o'clock.
Five o'clock. Thank you, Madam Chair.
Councilor Tossi?
He's coming.
Thank you. Thank you, Councilor Frida. Moving on at the forty-one dash twenty-five, is the chairwoman in legal affairs ready to report?
I am. Forty-one dash twenty-five, Lisa Nugent of Forty-Five Beth Avenue, Leominster, requests that the city council prohibit all horse and dog racing in any associated betting or wagering anywhere within Leominster, Massachusetts by the following. Amend Article One, Section twenty-four, twenty-two dash four definitions by adding the following definition, racetrack. Any track of land where horses or dogs are raced and where any form of betting or wagering on the speed or ability of horses or dogs are permitted or conducted. Amend Article Three, Section twenty-two dash seventeen, underlying districts table of uses under business, uses, under business uses to add racetrack as a listed use and to add the letter N for not allowed in every column for each and every district. Amend Article Three, Section twenty-two dash eighteen, overlay district table of uses under business uses to add racetrack as a listed use and to add the letter U for underlying district in each and every column for each and every overlay district. The purpose of this zoning amendment is to prohibit commercial horse or dog racing anywhere within the city of Leominster. We had a public hearing this evening, and we are going to continue the public hearing to five twenty-seven, so I would request further time, and I would ask that you check with my committee.
Sure. Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
And Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
That is the budget hearing night. We have the budget scheduled at six, Water or Sewer, six and six oh five and six ten. Six forty, sound okay to you? Yeah, I'm going to think the budget should take up at least a half an hour.
Right, 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 right. Maybe we can start, you know, six forty, if six forty is the only time that we have, maybe we could start then if we need to, you know, open the meeting and adjourn, we can do that as well.
Yeah.
To accommodate everybody. Yeah, six forty.
We probably will have to, but.
Okay, yeah.
Okay, so the recommendation is to grant forty-one dash twenty-five further time and to continue the public hearing until five twenty-seven at six forty PM. And Councilor Tossi, you're okay with that?
Yes.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Yes.
All in favor, please recognize the usual manner? All right, that may be done by vote of nine to zero. Moving on to forty-seven dash twenty-five, Councilor.
Sorry. Forty-seven twenty-five, Brian R. Falk, attorney, on behalf of Crossroads Office Park LLC, requests to adopt the proposed fairgrounds overlay district zoning amendments regarding six seventy, six ninety, and six ninety-four Mechanic Street in Leominster, Mass. The public hearing is scheduled for June ninth at six twenty PM. A number of referrals were made at our last meeting, and I guess there's some confusion about them. We've received one back, so at this point that we, you know, and now that we have it scheduled for six nine, at six twenty PM, the public hearing, my recommendation would be further time.
The planning board will not hear this until six sixteen.
Right.
Might we consider hearing this instead of on six nine, on six twenty-three? I'm, I'm just pointing out that the planning board won't take this up until June sixteenth. So, I mean, we could continue the public hearing to six twenty-three instead of six nine. Would that make, it's up to you, but we're going to hear, we're going to have a public hearing twice.
Right, right. I guess, I guess I don't have a problem with that.
You're okay with that?
Yeah.
Just, just throwing it out there. All right. Councilor Tossi, Councilor Frida, go ahead.
Just through the chair to the clerk, is this being advertised for the night? That already, that already set up?
That's a good question.
Yeah, but I guess I have plenty of time to.
You have time to change it?
Cancel. Yeah. Cancel that order.
Okay, all right, Councilor Frida. Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
And Councilor Pauline Cormier?
Makes sense, I agree.
All right. You've heard the recommendation on forty-seven dash twenty-five for further time and to continue the public hearing until June twenty-third, and I don't think we have anything scheduled that night yet, so why don't we do this at six thirty?
Sure.
All right. All those in favor, please recognize the usual manner? All right, so that may be done. All right, moving on to legal affairs, forty-one, forty-eight dash twenty-five.
Forty-eight twenty-five, Thomas M. Bovinzi, request an amendment to change zoning district of parcel ninety-four dash six. Amend the zoning ordinance of the city of Leominster, Mass. to change the boundaries of the zoning district shown on the zoning map so that the parcel identified as lot six on assessors map ninety-four, containing approximately nine thousand nine hundred eighty-four square feet, and having an address of forty-four Union Street, shall be located entirely in the Residence B District. Regarding Way Mike LLC, JMC Realty Trust, Kyle Mulanzen zoning change has to do with twenty-six Union Street, Assessors Parcel ninety-four dash four, forty Union Street, Assessors Parcel ninety-four dash five, and forty-four Union Street, Assessors Parcel ninety-four dash six. So the public hearing for this is scheduled for June ninth at six PM, and referrals have been made to the planning board, assessors office, and building inspector. So at this point, I would give this, or I would ask to give this further time.
Very well. Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the legal affairs committee to give forty-eight dash twenty-five further time. Any additional discussion necessary? Seeing none, all those in favor, please indicate in the usual manner. Forty-eight dash twenty-five has been given further time. Moving on to public services, the chairman ready to report?
I will be abstaining from this one. This affects my employer, Mr. President. Thank you.
So noted.
I am forty-two dash twenty-five, Massachusetts Electric Company, doing business as National Grid and Verizon New England Inc., requests permission to locate poles, wires, and fixtures, including the necessary sustaining and protecting fixtures along and across the following public way. Torrey Circle, National Grid, to install one jointly owned pole on Torrey Circle, beginning at a point approximately three hundred and sixty-seven feet northwest of the center line at a point approximately 367 feet northwest of the center line of the intersection of Willard Street and Torrey Circle. National Grid, to install one new class, 35-foot, Class 3 pole and anchor numbered P250 on Torrey Circle to reposition the overhead lines that have been knocked down by dump trucks, per the customer's request, Leominster, Mass., location approximately as shown on plan attached. The public hearing was continued to earlier this evening because of some questions a constituent had. National Grid indicated that those have been addressed, the constituent didn't come back tonight, so seeing such, my recommendation would be to grant, and I'd ask that you check with the other members of the committee.
Very well. Counselor Frida?
I agree.
And Counselor Noesworthy?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Public Service Committee to grant 42-25. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor, please recognize usual manner. 42-25 is granted by a vote of 8 to 0. What a difference a little communication makes, huh? All right, moving on to new business and letters from the mayor. I guess I could read this into the record. The council received a letter from the mayor dated May 6, 2025. On April 11, I sent a letter to the council concerning the Fallbrook School project. The MSBA vote on the total project cost of $112 million in bonds to support the project is scheduled to be on the council agenda on May 12. I'm not sure that happened. As detailed in the previous letter, our minimum share of the total cost of this project is This estimate is contingent upon the project's progression and final pricing once it is out to bid. The proposed current funding sources for the project are the current budget debt service of $2,400,000, which will be placed in an overtime aligned with project cash flow requirements. These funds are already accounted for within our existing debt service. The approved 0.75% increase in the meals tax as dedicated revenue source for the project, which we estimate will raise between $500,000 to $1 million in annual revenue, this amount remains variable. In keeping with our commitment to transparency, I want to reiterate that, as previously communicated and affirmed through our discussions with the city's financial advisor, numerous variables can influence the total cost of the project of this scale. While our current financial planning is based on today's interest rates, future market conditions remain uncertain. In a worst-case scenario, depending on final interest rates and total amount bonded, the annual debt service could range from $2.8 to $3.5 million. It is important to note that all figures provided are based on projects, projections, and estimates. There are many factors that could influence the final costs in financing of the project, including changes in the broader economy, the number of restaurants visited in the city, impacting meals, tax, revenue, or unforeseen complications during construction. Ultimately, we will need to fund the full cost of the project regardless of these variables, although we estimate current funding sources will cover the cost of the project, changes in the above factors could leave a potential funding gap of up to $600,000 annually. If a funding gap does arise as the project progresses, we will need to get, need clear guidance on how the city should proceed. The two primary options are using excess levy capacity, which result in a permanent increase to the tax rate, or pursuing a debt exclusion, which would temporarily raise the tax rate for the duration of the additional debt service. I'm requesting your input on how best to proceed should a gap materialize and appreciate your continued support as we work toward an important investment in our city's future. There was an additional letter sent on, oh, I'm sorry, that is the, that is the most recent letter. There was a letter sent on May 1, which essentially, this letter expanded on. So, I think we're all aware of the school project, we're all aware of that, you know, the SBA has changed the game, so to speak, just for the public. In the old days, if the city received a 70% reimbursement, that meant 70% reimbursement. Today, there are exemptions from reimbursement for site work and demolition, there are caps on construction costs, and with all that said, our consultant is hopeful that our ultimate reimbursement will be somewhere around 55% of the total cost of about $115 million for this building. And as the mayor is pointing out, there's no guarantee that our current debt service position, as well as their most recently passed meals tax revenue, which is new revenue, will be enough to finance the project. As indicated in the letter, no surprise, there's a lot of variables here, we don't know how this bid's gonna come in, whether it'll be more or less than $115 million, we don't know what the interest rate will be on the final bond, that's probably years down the road, so there are a lot of things up in the air. I don't know if any of the counselors have anything that they want to input to this? You know, I think we just have a discussion, and Counselor Frida, I see your hand first, and I'll let you give your input.
I'm gonna quote the mayor's comment on transparency. Were we supposed to have a meeting? Were we supposed to have a talk amongst ourselves on what we were gonna do with this? Is that what he was hoping for?
Yeah, I suppose that's what he was hoping for.
So, are we gonna have that? He wants it done before the June 9?
We can have that talk now, we could special, we could have a special meeting to have it?
Well, I don't think we can have a talk, first of all, first of all, if I'm, maybe somebody can help me, but I've been through enough buildings to know, but this will be the first time in my 38 years we talk about touching our levy capacity or a debt exclusion. Can anybody here talk about our levy capacity? We don't know how much that would be, and that we wouldn't know whether we're raising someone's taxes by $100 a year or $1,000 a year? We don't have a clue?
We, we would have to vote on that in, eventually. The levy, excess levy capacity, as it stands right now, is 6.1, 6.14%. It's actually increased over the last few years. That's a lot, a lot of potential revenue that could be raised through excess levy capacity. I, I agree with you, Counselor. I mean, that's just like, a little about, little bit like, you know, poking into a bag with not knowing what's inside of it. We have no idea.
Yeah, I don't think we can do that. How can we, how can we do that without having public comment? I mean, that, this is really one that I wouldn't touch without public comment.
Well, here's, here's how I look at it. If we, if we said debt exclusion, then we got plenty of public comment, right? We have a vote.
And there'd be a vote.
Right. And that, we all know politically, that that might be a very uphill battle out there in the public to build a school with debt exclusion. So, we all can probably take a little bit of an educated guess as to what's gonna happen. On the other hand, if we go the excess levy capacity route, it really, the vote is here, the council alone, and, you know, we know, going through recent times on some of the issues that we're dealing with right now, that the public wants a say, and, and that, as I agree with you.
I just think it's important for anyone to know, when we're talking excess levy capacity, it means we have almost $7 million that we can agree to raise without going to the public. So, we can raise everybody's taxes with this $7 million. Correct me if I'm wrong, if anybody wants to correct me, that we could do that without going to the public. We can raise the taxes.
This, this is-
We're stopping it forever.
This is exactly-
Which would be forever.
This is exactly why Moody's doesn't like you-
Exactly.
-developing excess levy capacity, because they know it's not palatable to raise people's taxes beyond the Prop 2.5 limit. So when you develop this excess levy capacity, what the public should understand is that we have not taxed the public the full 2.5 levy capacity limit for a number of times over the past several years, and have developed, so when you don't do that, when you don't levy that tax, it rolls forward. But as indicated, Moody's doesn't like that, because generally, communities, once you do that, don't use it, because now you're taxing people in the present, you know, more than that 2.5. We all hear every year after the budget's passed, that taxes have gone up, and that's a fact of life, they go up every, every year. So I agree with you, 100% that this-
We, we need to have Jen Reddington here to have a discussion on what the effect of the public would be with, with touching the levy capacity, which, and what we could expect with a debt exclusion. We know the debt exclusion is going outside of that and, and taking out the money that's necessary, which would end when the, when it was paid.
Right.
So it's not continuous on the tax rate. So we need to have Jen Reddington here to give us an idea of, of what it looks like in both situations. I mean, this is, this is serious stuff, we're talking $115 million.
No question. Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr?
Yep. I completely agree with my at-large counsel to my left, you know, we need to have the comptroller come down and tell us, you know, quantify this, so that we can have a conversation, you know, with constituents, so they can know what this is all about. However, I'm gonna bring up a third one, which I'm sure is gonna be super popular, and that is looking at free cash in our stabilization fund. We pay, you know, the, the knock on that is that this is for emergencies, they're one-time expenses, everybody here has voted on, everybody knows that we pay overtime, we pay other kinds of expenses that should rightfully, really, they're operating, they should be in the budget. So if we have a 10-year need for a school, if it's $0.5 million, $600,000, I would say it should come out of either stabilization or free cash. However, you know, they want to quantify it. There's also capital, we have a capitalization fund account that has over $2 million in it, you know, maybe that's the appropriate place to take, but I, it would, I'd have to be, I can't imagine honestly, raising people's taxes. I just can't. Everybody I hear from, they are maxed out. So, we need the new school, there's no question about it, I wouldn't argue that, you know, it's not, it's overdue. We need, we need a new school. So, we need information from the comptroller, hard numbers, and I'd like to have a conversation about using, you know, the free cash that we roll over from year to year.
All right. Anyone else? I mean, I certainly think that having the comptroller here is absolutely indispensable to have any kind of educated discussion about this.
There's also gonna be a way, and I don't know how we do it anymore, because we don't have a newspaper, but there's gotta be a way to tell the public that we're talking about this. Gotta be a way to get to the public, and, and I know some people watch this, but there's gotta be a way to, to communicate with the public that we're talking about making a serious, a serious decision on raising their taxes. And I don't, I don't have the answer for that, I don't know how to do it, but we need to, we need to somehow figure out how we, how we can do that.
Yeah, I, I have a lot of questions about these numbers in general. I know that the estimate on the meals tax, which I was a huge proponent of in the Fallbrook School Building Committee early on, I said, if this project's going forward, we're gonna have to adopt that meals tax option, there's no doubt about it. And I know that was discussed even way back in 2017, and the estimates back in 2017 were higher than $1 million at that time. Now, I don't pretend to know what that's gonna generate for revenue, and the state has not been really forthcoming with what that information, you know, they should know right now, based on, people are paying 6.25%. It seemed to me that the math isn't that hard. If we collected X, the Department of Revenue collected X at 6.25%, then we should know what they collected, they would collect if it was 7% last year. I think we ought to put some pressure on the Department of Revenue to come up with a number for us, because this may all be, you know, irrelevant. I mean, if that meals option taxes more than $1 million, or significantly more than $1 million, we may save ourselves a lot of grief here. So I think that's another, beyond having the comptroller down here, I think we need to put some pressure on the Department of Revenue to find out what that number is.
I also think that the, the amount of, the $115 million, I don't think is gonna stay there. I mean, we're talking tariffs, you're talking about a lot of-
A lot of things gonna happen.
... every supply that's, that's gonna happen in the course of building that school.
Who knows? You're right, you're absolutely right. Counselor Noesworthy?
To the chair, I just wanted to echo what you've just said, what the counselors at large have said, and hearing more ideas, as was mentioned during the open forum, and I look forward to further discussion.
Okay. Would the council be amenable to putting this on the agenda, I guess the next agenda, and asking the comptroller to attend?
Just timeline-wise, does that give us enough time with the, funding the project piece of the Fallbrook School timeline we're on?
I, I think-
I just don't wanna run up against a wall.
Well, look, at, at the end of the day, this is not our call, right? So, it's the mayor's call.
Yeah.
I mean, we're here to talk about it, we're here to let the community know about it, and I think we all are in concert on that, but that's the best I think we can do at this juncture, unless anybody's got a bigger, more brilliant idea.
Yes, because even though it's the mayor's call, if we don't vote for either of these, it's not gonna happen.
Right.
You can't do it without the money.
No, it's, it's a cooperative thing, but it's, you know, the, I mean, at the end of the day, he's gotta be the one who generates it. So, so is that, go ahead, Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr.
I was just gonna say, could we piggyback onto either one of the Finance Committee meetings for the budget? I mean, the one where he gives the overview, could we talk about it then, on May 19?
Sure.
I mean, I'm sure that the comptroller's gonna be here.
I'm trying to think, maybe we should have a separate item on the agenda for her, but she's gonna be here anyway.
Yeah, we can amend the agenda, perhaps.
Or we can have it on the 27th of May, you know, when we have the budget hearings, I'm sure she'll be here then as well.
That might be, that might be a good idea. Have it on the 27th as part of the budget hearing.
Okay.
She's gonna be here anyway.
Yep, okay, well, either one, yep.
Counselor Frida?
Through the chair to the Finance Chair, I know he's not gonna wanna hear me again, but I think, I think on the finance, the budget hearings, I think this is probably a year where we should have more of the departments in. I mean, we've been cutting them short, we have a new council this year. I think the Rec Department should come in, they, they're getting a substantial amount of money now, see what they need, what, what the budgets look like. I think they should, I think we should have them all in, pretty much.
Okay.
Just my opinion.
All right. Okay, anybody else have anything on this, before we move on to old business? All right, so we'll move on to old business, starting with second reading of an ordinance. Counselor? Actually, as I look at the way this is headed, okay, the first one is, yeah, that's second reading, on 24-25.
Right, I think they're all second readings, right?
Yes, they are.
Okay, second reading of an ordinance, this was petition 24-25. Should I read the petition, or can I just read the, the-
Just the ordinance.
Okay, the ordinance, okay. So, formally, petition 24-25, the ordinance reads, "In the year 2025, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, amending Chapter 2 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning is hereby amended by amending the zoning map established pursuant to Section 22-6, such that the following parcels shall be situated entirely in the Residence B zoning district. 29 June, Street Lot 6, Assessors' Map 352." My recommendation would be that we adopt the second reading, and I would appreciate it if you poll my committee.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
And Counselor Cormier?
I agree.
You heard the recommendation to adopt the second reading of the ordinance, is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call, starting with Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Oringer?
Yay.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, the second reading is adopted by a vote of 9 to 0. Moving on to the second reading of what was formerly 29-25.
Right, the petition formerly 29-25 was submitted by Elizabeth Wood on behalf of the Planning Board to amend the zoning ordinance pertaining, pertaining to the flood plain. This was mandated, these were new maps and new drawings of the flood plain, made by DEP, I believe. So, the, the ordinance, which is very lengthy and which will be on, on file with the clerk's office, for people who want any kind of detail, I'll just read the introduction. "In the year 2025, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, amend Chapter 22 of the revised ordinances entitled zoning. Article 6 of the zoning ordinance entitled Special Districts Regulations is hereby amended by deleting Section 22-34 Flood Plain District in its entirety and inserting in its place the following. Article 6, Special Districts Regulations, Section 22-34 Flood Plain District." And again, this was redefined, the maps were redrawn, all by DEP, it was mandated. So, my recommendation would be to adopt the second reading.
Thank you, Counselor. Counselor Tossi?
I agree.
And Counselor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of what was formerly 29-25. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, this will be by roll call vote, starting with Counselor David Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Pauline Cormier?
Yay.
Counselor Oringer?
Yay.
Counselor Noesworthy?
Yay.
Counselor Tossi?
Yay.
And Counselor Shalfo-Zephyr?
Yay.
Counselor Robbins?
Yay.
Counselor Frida?
Yay.
And I shall be recorded as yay, the second reading is adopted by a vote of 9 to 0. Moving on to formerly C-54, and I'd be more than overjoyed if you omit the tables.
I am absolutely going to omit the tables, but I'm a little confused. Personnel, 54. So, 54, this is Dean Mazzarella, Mayor, request to adopt detached ordinance update, this ordinance update to Chapter 16 personnel. Leominster Revised Ordinance reflects the non-union employee salary and wage adjustments for FY '25 through FY '27 time period. Right, I've got the, the numbers are mixed up, okay. So, what this is, there are three salary tables that are part of the ordinance that will be available for anyone in the public who wishes to look at those in detail. And the ordinance reads, "In the year 2024, amending Chapter 16 of the revised ordinances entitled personnel. Be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Leominster as follows, Chapter 16, Article 2, Section 16-30 of the revised ordinances entitled compensation grades, is hereby And again, what these tables shows are the different salary ranges and the minimum street range, the mid-street range, the maximums for FY '25, '26, and '27. My recommendation would be that we adopt the second reading.
Very well. Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
And Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
Heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to grant the second reading of what was formerly C-54. Is there any further discussion? Seeing none, all those, I'm sorry, this will be by roll call. Councilor David Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Pauline Cormier.
Yay.
Councilor Oringer.
Yay.
Councilor Noesworthy.
Yay.
Councilor Tossi.
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Robbins.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
I'll be recorded as yay. The second reading is adopted by a vote of nine to zero. Moving on to C-55.
Once again, Mr. President, I need to abstain from this one. It involves fire department.
Okay, very well. So noted.
Yep. C-55, Dean Mazzarella, Mayor, request to adopt the attached updates. This ordinance update to Chart 16 personnel. Section 16 through 30 of the Lemonster revised ordinances reflects, one, the Lemonster Fire Department's salary and wages adjustments for FY '24 through FY '27, and, two, the Department of Public Works' salary and wages adjustments for FY '25 through FY '27. So, the ordinance reads, "In the year 2025, amending Chapter 16 of the revised ordinances entitled personnel, be it ordained by the City Council of the City of Lemonster as follows. Chapter 16, Article 2, Section 16 through 30 of the revised ordinances entitled compensation grades is hereby amended by deleting the provision for..." Something for... I would think Lemonster Fire Department's salary and wage adjustments and inserting in its place the following. And then there are...
Nine pages.
Nine pages of tables that reflect a variety of job categories and breaks down the increases for FY '24, '25, '26, and '27. My recommendation would be to adopt this second reading, and I would ask that you pull my committee.
Councilor Tossi?
I agree.
Councilor Pauline Cormier?
I agree.
You've heard the unanimous recommendation of the Legal Affairs Committee to adopt the second reading of what was formerly C-55. Is there any further discussion? Nobody wants to hear the nine pages of tables?
No.
That would be a filibuster. Starting with Pauline Cormier.
This is C-55, sorry. Yay.
Councilor Oringer.
Yay.
Councilor Noesworthy.
Yay.
Councilor Tossi.
Yay.
Councilor Shalfo-Zephyr.
Yay.
Councilor Robbins.
Yay.
Councilor Frida.
Yay.
I'll be recorded as yay. The C-55 is adopted, the former C-55 adopted by a vote of eight to zero. That brings us to the community calendar. I guess we all know we have our Memorial Day events coming up before our next meeting on May, I guess it would be the...
30.
I mean, well, I'm trying to think what the Friday date is on...
30.
No, no.
Sorry?
24.
24?
Oh, 23.
No, 24 is Saturday, 23.
23.
On the 23rd of May at 6 o'clock at the Veteran Center is the White Cross Ceremony. The next day, Saturday, is the Flagging of Graves. And then our Memorial Day activities are the 26th, starting at the Common. And if anybody has the time off the top of their head, I think it's 8:30 if I'm not mistaken. Is that correct?
That's right.
Okay. Anybody else have anything for the community calendar? Councilor Robbins?
Just the high school graduation is May 31, starting at 10 Doyle Field.
Very well. Thank you, Councilor Robbins. Councilor Frida?
Yeah, just a quick question as to what process you would like me to follow to get something on this agenda. I have submitted something to you six separate times, and you just refused to put it on the agenda, and I really want to know why, because it is council-related.
I have suggested to you in the past that what you petitioned was to adopt a code of conduct and nothing more. No other language, no other proposed rule, amendment, deletion, anything. So, I believed that that's not a petition, and I checked with the city solicitor, and in writing, he suggested to me that he agreed that it wasn't a petition. And I just want, I would ask you, it doesn't have to be in final form, just something that I can refer to committee to get the discussion started.
The city solicitor, it's funny, he said that to you. The city solicitor told me that it was fine, because I said that my suggestion was going to be to follow what the city employees follow.
On October 10, the city clerk asked you for that opinion that you got from the city solicitor, and we haven't received it since.
You obviously don't want to put it on. That's pretty clear.
I'm happy to put on something that's in the form of a petition.
That was a different one the first time.
Counselor, just all you need to do is create, if you want to, if you want to take a document that's in existence, and you want it to, you want to engraft something that city employees generally follow, and you want that to be a petition, then just create the petition that says that, and I'll refer to a committee gladly. But to write a few words that say, "Adopt a code of conduct," is not a petition.
You wouldn't suggest that to the clerk when they ask about putting it on the agenda?
I've suggested to...
You never talked to me.
I've suggested publicly multiple times.
It's just going to be a he-said, she-said thing, so we'll just leave it at that.
Listen, I don't want to argue with you about this. All I want to do is develop a process, a legitimate process moving forward. If you have something in mind, we will certainly entertain it, and I'll refer it to the appropriate committee, and we'll have a discussion, we'll have a subcommittee meeting, whatever you'd like to do. That's all you have to do, is just create what you want that code of conduct to be. I don't feel it's fair to any of these committee chairs that they should have to create something that you want. I mean, you want it, you tell us what it is you want.
I have all the documentation to go with it, and I said I had it.
Then submit it.
I said I had it. I'm not going to put four pages in writing.